We have to set public hearings on two sewage disposal variance requests. So, is there a motion to entertain going into the local board of health?
No.
All right. Motion made by Councilperson Ferrone, seconded by Councilperson Metavier. All those in favor of moving into the Queensbury Local Board of Health, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We're now into the local board of health. So Rose, would you describe our first consideration for the public, please?
So, resolution setting a public hearing on sewage disposal variance application of Scott and Carol Sbraco.
Okay. Scott and Carol Guzzano, or Sabraco, rather, I got the wrong one, live on 2952 State Route 9L, Bridge Road, Shoreline Road. All right. They have about a third of an acre. It's a two-bedroom place. They want to put a new onsite system. Has rather steep terrain. They are going to put in a Clarus Fusion 450 and a force man that goes up to a dispersal field of five 15-foot laterals. Soil tests are good, and they're asking for just two variances. The first variance, to be eight foot from the easterly property line in lieu of the required 10-foot setback. And the second variance, five foot from the southern property line in lieu of the required 10-foot setback. So just two variances, and this is to set the public hearing on those requested variances, to which the public is welcome to speak. The public hearing is set for September 14th here in the Activity Center at 7:00 PM. Okay. Is there a motion to set this public hearing?
Certainly.
Moved by Councilperson Metavier, seconded by Councilperson Freer. Rule call vote on this, please.
Councilperson Freer?
Yes.
Ferrone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Stroud?
Yes.
And Metavier?
Yes. Okay. Unanimously passes, September 14th. We have a second one.
So, resolution setting a public hearing on sewage disposal variance application of John Graziano.
All right. John Graziano lives at Two Sunset Lane, environmental design, designed his system. It's an Algen dispersal system. So there is, according to the engineer Dennis McElroy, there's no location on the Graziano lot that could meet the 100-foot setback from their neighbor's well. The carts place the well mid-lot, as they're entitled to do, but they can't do any better than 80 feet. So they're asking for a 20-foot variance in this case. And this is a property located at Two Sunset Lane. So this is to set the public hearing for September 14th on this sewage disposal variance application. Is there a motion to set the public hearing?
No.
Moved by Councilperson Metavier.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson McGee. Rule call vote on this, please, Rose.
Councilperson Ferrone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Stroud?
Yeah.
Metavier?
Yes.
And Freer?
Yes.
All right. That's the public hearings for these two applications. These are the only two applications for the Board of Public Health tonight, and we'll have those public hearings on September 14th. Having no more business in the local board of health, is there a motion to move out of the local board of health?
No.
Moved by Councilperson Ferrone.
Second.
Seconded by Councilperson Metavier. All those in favor of moving out of the local board of health, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. We're now out of the board of health. Next, we have four public hearings. And so they're all on four of the five fire departments. We've already extended the contract for the Westlands Falls Fire Department. So this includes Bay Ridge, North Queensbury, Queensbury Central, and South Queensbury. They're three-year contracts for Bay Ridge, North, and Queensbury Central, and they are a five-year agreement with South Queensbury because the bank required they do that. South Queensbury is redoing their building, so they had to take out a loan for that. The bank referred to five-year contract. So the contracts in general are 2% of the aggregate. And I'll let Rose introduce us for the first one, but except for the numbers, they're all going to be similar in format. So I'll explain the format to you, and I'll explain the numbers as they vary as we go along. Okay. So 2.1?
So, public hearing on 2021 through 2023 Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and Bay Ridge Volunteer Fire Company, Inc.
Okay. Thank you. So this is again 2% of the aggregate. It's a 2021, 2022, and 2023 contractual agreement, a 2% aggregate increase. Now, the fire departments each have a vehicle or apparatus replacement program. They have their capital projects. They also have their operations costs, and they have their debt loads. So I've asked them, for the sake of assuring that they plan for these things, that capital projects, apparatus replacement, and so forth, be part of their budget. Now I say this because in the past, we would approve a budget, and then almost haphazardly they come up and they say, "Well, you need a new apparatus." Well, then they needed more money for this new apparatus. So what we've asked them to do is, all right, well, we'll give you solid contracts. You plan for your apparatus replacement. And so they all have very good plans. So now they're planning for everything. They're planning for some of their capital operations that they know need to take place. And that's true of all five fire companies. So I won't explain that again, but they have two budget line items. One is maintenance, operations, insurance, capital projects, and apparatus replacement, like I explained, and the second is debt service. So add those two together, and that's their total budget. So, we're on Bay Ridge. So Bay Ridge in 2021 will be a 2% increase over 2020, this year's, for a total of $503,603. Again, a 2% increase. And the third year, $523,948. Now, the other thing I want to bring to the public's attention, as if they didn't know, and imagine most people know, but it's worth saying. The fire companies are independent agencies. We contract services. They are not a town agency. They are an independent company. We contract for their services. Now, if you're saying you think this is expensive, this is with volunteers folks. Volunteers. Some of these companies have 50, 60, or more. Volunteers. These are people who don't earn a cent, but put a lot of time into maintaining that building, maintaining the grounds, maintaining the apparatus, doing a lot of training. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of dedication. Now, one thing I've noticed, well, why would people do this? Because these are the type of people that want to do something for their community. This is the type of person, the volunteer firemen I'm talking about, who is here because they want to make this world a better, safer place than the one they came into. They want to leave it to the next generation in better shape. That's the dedication that these volunteers have. We don't pay them a penny. We offer a small retirement program if they work hard and they earn over 50 points. That's another whole explanation. It is not easy to do, and you can earn somewhat of a retirement. It's a nice kind of thing that we can do for our volunteers, and we're looking at increasing that. This year's not a good year for that conversation, but we had that conversation. It was looked at favorably, and we will get back to the conversation, and we will do something about it. Because I think we deeply appreciate all the time. When I hear that whistle go, and I hear it from my house, and I know there's somebody here that lives on Dorset Place, I know, here I am in the middle of all my lot, that if I was a volunteer fireperson, I'd have to drop everything I'm doing, jump in my car, get to the station, or get to the site if I've got my equipment in my car. But if I'm a driver and I got to be a first responder, then I've got to go to the station. I'm watching the TV at night. It could be 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock. It could be 2 o'clock in the morning. I'm sleeping. There's an automobile accident that needs traffic management. Well, you know what? Our volunteer firepeople are trained in traffic management. So they don't just respond to fires. They respond to a lot of our needs. I know that we've had flooding, and our fire departments go and they use their pumps to pump out the basements. They don't have to do that. We don't contract with them to provide that service. These guys don't get paid for getting out early in the morning and pumping out that basement. They're doing it because they're volunteers and they want to help make the community a better place to live and try and take the burdens off some of these people who fortune hasn't been so favorable. So I want to thank everybody. I won't repeat that five times for all five departments. I want that message to go out from all of us and the community to you people. All right. So there is public hearing on Bay Ridge's proposed contract tonight for fire protection services. I'm going to open the public hearing. So, we have people here. I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak first. If you'll come up to the mic, and please not try and touch anything. That's why we put it on a podium. And you know, we used to have a table there with microphones. The chairs got touched, the table got touched. We're trying to avoid that. If you come up and express your thoughts on Bay Ridge's proposed fire contract for three years, you're welcome to do that. Then, I'm going to ask anybody out there in the YouTube world to call 761-8225. And I got the phone here. So you people that are watching YouTube, and you have a question about Bay Ridge's contract, then you're welcome to call in. And Zoom, I'm watching you, and I can see if somebody wants to ask a question. There's a little blue hand up goes up. So I will be watching YouTube. So if you have a question on Bay Ridge's proposed Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and the fire company, you're welcome to ask or share your thoughts, or whatever the case may be. So I'm going to start here. Is there anybody present that would like to speak? I'm going to open the public hearing, and is there anybody present who would like to speak to Bay Ridge's proposed Fire Protection Service Agreement? Seeing none that are present? YouTube. Anybody like to call in? The only thing is, when you call in, you have to have a service that provides me with who you are. If you crop up anonymous, I'm not taking the phone call. Okay? Your name has to crop up. Well, wait a minute. Give people a chance to call in. Okay. Not getting anything there. Nobody has a little blue hand up on Zoom? Nobody's calling in? All right. Let me close the public hearing. Any thoughts on behalf of the town board before we entertain a motion to approve and vote on this?
No.
Okay. All right. How about a motion to approve the 21 through 2023 Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and the Bay Ridge Volunteer Fire Company?
I'm going to vote for it.
Moved by Councilperson Metavier, seconded by Councilperson Freer. Rule call vote on this, please.
Councilperson Stroud?
Yes.
Metavier?
Yes.
Freer?
Yes.
Ferrone?
Yes.
And McGee?
Yes.
Okay. Next is 2.2, please, Rose.
Public hearing on 2021 through 2023 Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and North Queensbury Volunteer Fire Company, Inc.
All right. The current contract is $344,500. I think they asked for a percent and a half, and they're keeping it steady for three years. And that's going to service their needs. So they're asking for a $347,000 budget for 2021, 2022, and 2023. And everything that I said previously applies to all these companies. All right. So I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody present who would like to speak to North Queensbury Volunteer Fire Company's Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and themselves for 2021, 2022, and 2023? All right. Is there anybody out in the YouTube world that would like to call in at 518? Area code 761-8225. Anybody from Zoom? Blue hand. All right. Nobody from Zoom? All right. I'll close the public hearing and entertain a vote to approve North Queensbury Volunteer Fire Company's proposed contract for the next three years. Moved by Councilperson Metavier. Seconded by Councilperson McGee. Rule call vote on this, please, Rose.
Councilperson Metavier?
Yes.
Freer?
Yes.
Ferrone?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
And Stroud?
Yes.
All right. Resolution, public hearing, 2.3, Rose.
Public hearing on 2021 through 2023 Fire Protection Service Agreement between the Town of Queensbury and Queensbury Central Volunteer Fire Company, Inc.
All right. Queensbury Central Fire Company is the busiest, and they have two houses. House number one on Lafayette, house number two on Aviation. House number two used to be the house number one, and before it was house number one, there was another house number one on Foster Avenue, right? Did I have that right? Queensbury Central, yes. So, and I've been in little meetings in that old firehouse on Foster Avenue, and I think it's privately owned now, but Queensbury Central is by far the busiest. Well, they have Route 9. They have the Great Escape. They have the hotels. They have the plazas. They have the million-dollar mile. It's very demanding. And that's where the motorcycle and vehicle accidents are. So they're very busy. So their proposed budget, again, is a 2% increase. So for 2021, it's being proposed at $835,793. For 2022, 2% of the aggregate, so it'll be $852,509. And for 2023, it'll be $869,559. And again, I want to repeat, you think those numbers are high? What if we had paid fire? What do you think those numbers would be? Huh? I said you got 50, 60 volunteers? How about if you had 50, 60 people that were getting salaries, that are getting benefits, retirement? Well, that's sounding better all the time, isn't it, guys? For all the work they put in, they probably deserve some of that. All right. So I'll open the public hearing on Queensbury Central. And first, is there anybody present who would like to speak to Queensbury Central's proposed contract for the next three years? Seeing none? Uh, YouTube? Area code 518?
John?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Do I take my mask?
You can. We're at social distance.
So, my name's Ramadraj. I've lived at Big Crown with my name for 32 years. And Mr. Stroud, you're right. I do commend the Volunteer Fire Department for all the great work that they do, putting out fires and helping others. However, we ask you and the board to vote no on the service/budget agreement for the Queensbury Central Fire Department for one specific reason. And that is the siren. We want this vote not to be construed as a vote against the volunteers, but instead vote to preserve peace and equality in life in our neighborhood. It goes on. We hear that seven to eight times.
I know. I live not far from it.
I know. So imagine what that's like when it's open, when you're 100 yards away. It has a lot of neighbors in it. So let me just give you some pertinent information. That siren was turned off and silent for seven years. And for all those seven years, the fire department answered with a complete 100% response rate for fire emergency calls without the neighbors hearing the siren. So there are other means of primary and secondary means of notifying the firefighters that have been used and are still being used. There is no need for the siren now, as there was no need of it when it was silenced. Now, just, this is a little disingenuous here. It is currently turned off from the hours of 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM, and the response rate to calls is still a fantastic 100% without the siren. That begs the question to be asked, if it's off for 12 hours with no jeopardy to essential services, why not 24 hours? There are no state or federal laws that say a community has to have a fire siren to notify firefighters. The National Fire Protection Association, which sets standards for the emergency services, recommends primary and secondary means of notifying firefighters. How that is done is up to us. It is a community-by-community, fire department-by-fire department decision to have a fire siren. I was able to download a scanner from the department's website so I could listen to calls. The department says they voted to keep the siren active. How many of the members actually reside within the living, within the hearing distance of that siren? I think Mr. Ferrone might have some figures on that, how many firemen can actually hear that siren and live in that area. The fire department is supported by our tax dollars and all those who live in that district. They should have a vote as to having that siren turned on or not, and not leave that to the firemen. According to the website, banktractor.com, which is a commercial site for real estate and mortgages, firehouses have are number three as one of the most undesirable locations to live next door. That means that all the neighbors within proximity of the firehouse have had their properties devalued by the sound of the siren, and should appeal their assessments and have them lowered. This is a financial issue for us when we try to sell our houses, and for the town, once people realize that they should have their assessments lowered by having their property taxes lowered. There seems to be a lot of smoke blowing our way from the fire department as to what, why the decision was made to turn the siren off and then to turn it back on? Why did it take seven years to fix it if it was such a necessity for the firefighter? Seven years to go off? And that's not a necessity. To answer it, it is not a necessity, and it is not a necessity. If it was, then my homeowner's insurance rates would go up because there was no notification to the fire department, and the insurance companies would have noticed that on their bottom line and increased our rates. We have no other recourse left to us than other than to ask you as our elected representatives that you exercise the power of the purse and stipulate that the siren be silenced before you consider voting on the department's budget. I hope that my appeal does not fall on deaf ears. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? There are other Dorset Place residents? No? He was your spokesperson? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Please identify yourself for the record.
Thank you for your service. John Davis, Ten Crawlwood Lane. I live probably 150 yards from the firehouse. There's really three concerns. The trailer park is a septic bomb with 60 trailers living in there, and across the street is the chlorine station with a water department for Glens Falls. But I'm telling you, the siren is the most annoying thing after living near seven years free. I hope you approach with due diligence my reduction of $5,000 of my property value if you choose to keep the siren going. I was in the fire department when it was, before Mr. Slack's delivery service. We had a little thing that I put on top of my refrigerator. A light went off, a broadcast went off. I knew where to go. The siren goes off, I'm on my lawn. Where do I go? Just to the firehouse? I mean, maybe the fire truck has already left. It doesn't go off in the middle of the night, and there's just as many emergencies. It's pretty selective, and I don't know how they accomplish it. It does not reduce my fire insurance one bit. I have a 32,000-gallon pool in my backyard and a fire hydrant across the street. Do I get a reduction? No. It's not a professional... It's not a professional fire department. That's the fire insurance rules. I'm sorry, they're a great fire department. Maybe one or two of you know that a Queensberry Fire Department had one of the first female fire captains in the state of New York, North Queensberry, about 25 years ago. Hear, hear.
Well, thank you. Anybody else like to speak to Queensberry Central's proposed budget? No one present? How about somebody out watching YouTube? Area code 518, 761, 8225. While we're waiting for phone calls, and remember, you have to have caller ID when you call. Anybody on Zoom wish to speak to Queensberry Central's proposed contract with the town for the next three years? Okay. I'll keep the public hearing open for a minute.
I'd like to hear what the fire department has to say in response. Somebody from Central, right?
From Central wish to respond to this request?
Hi. David Rehn, the president of the company. I know we've dealt with this for quite a few years. Turn the siren down, it only goes off for about five seconds. Only winds up for about five seconds, and it goes back down again. We've turned it off at night. According to NFPA rulings that we have gotten, you have to have two means of notification for calls. Our pagers are one and we use the sirens for the other. They claim that cell phones are not reliable, according to NFPA says. Actually, a few months ago, we actually missed a call because our pagers didn't activate. The county was having problems with towers and dispatching. And it was 10 minutes into the call, four pagers went out.
Is the NFPA position on cell phones a current position, or is this something that's old?
I believe so, as far as I know, it is.
Thank you. Yes.
The company has voted a couple times to leave it like it is.
Yeah, well, we've had this discussion before. And we even offered to buy a replacement siren, thinking that there are sirens that are less intrusive available. Not to be found. After many, many searches and many, many different sources and talking to many firemen and doing many global searches, we couldn't find one that was less intrusive. They were all pretty intrusive. The decibel levels were about the same.
And I know we thought about possibly moving it or raising it, and I think that caused more issues. Raise it higher, I think it would affect more people, I think.
So, do you see, David, anything in the future, near future, where there might be a system where we could go without the siren? Is there anything out there? I mean, this is your field of expertise. What are you hearing, anything?
I'd have to bring it back to the company again. We can bring it up and discuss it again.
Would you do that?
I will do that, yes.
Well, wouldn't we be better off with this? I mean, part of the problem is, this is a motorized siren. So, you said five seconds to wind up? Five seconds, last five seconds? That sounds like a lot more than five seconds. I'm a half a mile from. I'm a half a mile from the firehouse, if a crow flies. And I hear it distinctively. I can't imagine what it is for people who live right behind that. But, I mean, based upon some research that, you know, I shared with John, I mean, there are units out there that apparently are recordings, if you would have a sound, which would just be automatically on and off. And it sounds like if there wasn't this NFPA requirement, this probably would be a non-issue, right?
Possibly. We handle a company, folks on issues like this, our company votes, and the company decides.
What was, what was the, what was happening when the siren wasn't going off? Were you out of compliance?
Actually, we didn't get notified of a structured fire in Weston Falls. We ended up calling another company to replace us.
During those, was it five years or seven? Seven years. The seven years that it didn't sound? How was that possible?
I, I wasn't involved at that, I'm not sure.
David, what? I'm sorry, I didn't.
The questions are just paying your head.
So, can you talk about, you can say no. Is it the vast majority, or is it a tight vote in terms of?
It was the vast majority the last time we talked about it.
Thank you.
But I can bring it back again. We can discuss it again at the next company meeting.
The majority of your firefighters are voting for it. My question is, how many people are within the close-knit vicinity to actually hear the siren?
At the top of my head, I have at least five or six people nearby.
But out of 50 volunteers, 50 volunteers?
Well, we don't have quite that many.
No.
Probably low 40s now. Less than that rarely active, I would assume.
So, really, it's a very small percentage of the total fire company volunteers that would even be in the vicinity to hear.
Possibly 50.
Please don't feel attacked by the questions. Is the vote for it because there would be an undue burden to find another way to be in compliance?
Well, that's one of the reasons. You know, the claim that cell phones are not reliable. According to NFPA, that's what we have to go by, so.
And that's by checking their website, or something that a human being from there actually said to you?
I'm not sure it was done before I became president, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I know there's a book of rules and regs.
And the one in Lafayette has a fire siren.
Yes.
And South has a fire siren. North has a fire siren. West has a fire siren. Bay Ridge has a fire siren. So, they all have fire sirens.
It's my understanding that West goes off at 2:00 in the morning.
Yes. I'm closer to our station, I am, my own actual, I can hear it.
Can I ask a question, past him, to somebody who's already spoken? Have either of you researched what other communities have done in these sorts of disputes?
I, they. I would start with the sheriff, because the sheriff states they have secure phones. Why is it the fire department? Right? Does the sheriff have any difficulty reaching his road patrol or getting enough turnout? Or when was the last time Queensberry missed a call? Three years? Four years?
About two months ago.
All right, but the question's a fair question, but the point of order is that since this has to be recorded and has to be linear, that if you have a question for somebody.
I'm not linear, okay, sorry.
When David's done, you can request it. They come up and respond to your question. Okay?
How long have you been captain?
I'm the president. This is my first year.
Okay. So, we could still check with the NFPA, and it might be a different.
I, no.
Okay.
I'll have Kevin look into it. I'll talk about it again at the next company meeting.
Okay, well, thank you.
If anything's changed, so.
All right.
The other question I'm just asking is, can you check if there are any other fire companies in the state? Who have another means other than the combination of the siren and the pagers?
Yeah. We've tried to explore different avenues, we really have. That seems to be the best fit for us. At the time, it was, and.
So, what happens between 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m.?
Well, we actually missed a call a couple months ago.
I know, but you said you had to be compliant, but you're not compliant 12 hours. I'm confused.
Well, that's, that's the company decided to do it that way for the neighbors.
Could you possibly?
That was a few years ago, we decided to do that.
But you could do the cell phones as a backup.
I'd have to check with NFPA, I'm not sure.
John, can you clarify your point? When you said we looked at new sirens?
Yeah, we did. We, we thought maybe there was a siren out there that wasn't the World War II kind of, you know, duck under the table type of sirens, with this is of that vintage.
That was about two or three minutes ago.
We thought that a newer siren might be, if it's possible, more pleasant to the neighbors. But we found no sirens that would be much more pleasant.
Yeah, Bay Ridge and North Queensberry have sirens, and they're not, they're not like.
And, and, you know, like Councilperson Frome said, maybe we could get one that was an audio type and might be shorter. But it's still going to be loud, it's still going to be so many decibels, and.
Will eliminate the wind-up and the wind-down.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know the age of that unit?
Been told it's a World War II circle.
And probably there since the firehouse has been there, right?
It's a duck and cover.
Well, with the firehouse, I believe. I don't know if it came from Foster Avenue, or, well, Foster Avenue was still open at the time, so.
Well, when we heard that, we had to get underneath the kitchen table or go to a hallway and creep and put our hands over our head and sit next to the wall, like that's going to do something if we receive atomic bomb. But nevertheless, it was that Cold War era thing. All right, so in all fairness, we'll get back to the drawing table and see if, it absolutely has to be a siren if we can get a better one. And, and the agreement was, if the town's talking about this, we would pay for it because you guys pretty much have, we keep you pretty close as far as your budget, your apparatus replacement, your capital projects and so forth. So, we'll leave that door open. You're going to talk about it with your folks again.
I will, next month.
You've heard, and there's several people here who haven't spoken yet, or if they want to, I don't know. And I, you know, and I don't live too far from it. But if we could address it, I think that would be nice, and so we'll work in that direction to see what we can do.
All right. I will bring it back.
All right.
Would there be an opportunity for, and I'm going to throw John under the bus, for the supervisor and myself to come and speak to this subject with the?
Yeah. That'd be good.
Okay.
All right.
You would let us know?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll give you a call.
Yeah, thank you. All right, David. Amanda, did you have a question for one of the residents?
Well, I mean, did you want?
Actually, Mr. Freer, you made a valid point. If that siren was off for seven years, they were out of compliance and yet they were not fined whatsoever, so that obviously not a requirement. But that siren beyond it all. And as I mentioned, the National Fire Protection Association sets standards for emergency services and recommends primary and secondary means of notifying firefighters. It does not say a siren. It's a community-by-community, department-by-fire department decision, and also should be up to you. There does not have to be a siren for means of notification. There's primary and secondary. It's up to us to decide.
And Roman, you live on Dorset Place, too?
No, I live on Crown. A hundred, less than 100 yards away from the fire.
On the corner?
No. My backyard is right up against the fire department's property.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions, Amanda?
I mean, in talking about the other sirens, it would seem to me that the, the purpose of a siren, no matter what its call is, is to disrupt. So, I, I think it would likely be a waste of our time and your time to look for a different siren. I think, I think the root is, can it be done without a siren? It seems very antiquated to say that cell phones don't work as a secondary means. And if it's, if it's about missing calls, then I would think that with a passionate, driven volunteer company, they would be open to anything, so long as it isn't about these regulations. And I wish I had done more research before tonight. I did not, and I will own that. And I think that the department and the residents should be, there should be great goodwill because of, of the exchange and the trust. And I, I would love to commit to finding a way to resolve it.
And we'll work on that, and.
Andy, did you say a couple times you saw that the firemen were already at the truck's siren?
Do you guys get notified when your pagers first, before the siren goes off? Yes. I believe so, because I've seen fire people with their lights.
Yeah, this is not, point of order.
Andy, do you want to speak to anything? I'll invite you up if you want me to. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roman.
And drive the fact that it was off for seven years, I know they made their calls. If it's a fluke, they've missed a call, maybe everybody was away or out partying or whatever. You can't fix that. I used to work for National Grid responding to gas leaks, and we, we'd take calls via cell phone. We made our call. Cell phone worked. I don't, I don't understand why they're saying it don't work. If they live too far away from cell towers, maybe they can't be the first responder.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's pretty annoying to like to, like to have them over my yard when it goes off. Plus, next door is a prospect school with handicapped children. I gotta believe that really affects them. They've already got some problems, I assume, when that goes off. I can't imagine what it does to them. Their play yard's 100 feet from it. And that, is that a report that you guys had done?
Yes.
It says it's 107 decibels.
And the one that I tried to find, I got one for 106 decibels. I mean, you know, that's not gonna, that's not the solution either.
No, no, I think moving it up on the water tower by John Stroud.
I mean.
Well, I mean, I don't know where the volunteer was.
I already get it radiated.
Well, let's, I'd like to commit with Amanda and try to find a solution to this. I don't think it's, I plan on passing the budget, but I think we, we need to take this as an action, because this is not just Central's problem. There, there are other people who are, you know, complaining about this.
John, have we ever talked about moving it up to the water tower?
No, I mean, that's one thought.
No, I think there's a better solution.
Well, if it's closer to the volunteers, I don't know where they.
We don't get complaints from Northview, from West.
Yes, we do.
You have to think about where they are.
We do.
It's not right on top of a neighbor, but, you know, if you look at Lafayette, if you look at Veterans Road, I mean, yes, there are houses near there, but there's nobody right really on top of it versus in this situation. If we throw it up on the water tower by John's tower.
No, there might be.
Well, we got a cell tower there, don't forget that.
We can hear Webster's, which is Queensberry Central from where we live. Why don't you just use one siren? Surely, maybe that would do the.
How's that?
Well, I want to, I appreciate everyone, the neighbors coming forward and.
We've got some work to do.
We're gonna, we're gonna extend the talks. As you know, we had those talks. It didn't go anywhere. The times have changed. The moods have changed. You know, we'll try and bring it to the company at a meeting and see if they would work with the town to take a more active approach to trying to find a solution to this.
Maybe there's other ways to communicate to them other than a pager or a cell phone.
We're good.
Something else.
We'll look into that, Andy. Yeah. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. John?
John Ochkins, North Queensbury Fire. I'm going to get in trouble for talking, but that's okay. There is another, there is another system we are using in the county, at least in North Queensbury, the I am responding system. It comes over your cell phone. After the, after the code, the tones go out on our pager, we get it to our cell phone and for us, we decided to adopt it because it's a handy system because we can push a button, tell that we're responding, number one, and we can hit another Google map and it'll tell us where the, where we're going. So it's been very handy. I don't know if Central's using it or not. And it does have its flaws though. If everyone doesn't have the, a cell phone that works in that area, they, they might get their call half an hour later. Maybe they, part of the contract, you can, we are, right now, you can't have cell phones as far as distributing. So if there's somebody without one, you can't pay for them as far as the town. So that might be something to look at. That is part of the contract, as you're aware. But there is a second system in the county right now and we are using it. And I actually use it quite a bit because it's a lot easier to sit there and look at your phone and hit Google map and now you know where it's going to end up. So.
But do you have a, do you have a siren too, John?
We have a siren, yeah. I think we all have sirens and, you know, I can hear a siren from my house a long way away and it doesn't disturb us because it's, it's away from anyone close. I guess, actually, I do know one gentleman that makes them jump a little bit, but, you know, so we, I think we've all had sirens. And I don't know about compliance and NFPA. We've never had a discussion. Have to worry about it. We used to have phones that called everybody's house, so this goes a long way away. But currently, we have pagers and we come across their cell phone for I am responding. So there are, there are two systems right now that are working. So you might want to talk to Brian Lefort, see if that is, you know, what his thoughts are on the whole thing and see where you'd go from there.
So is it a text or a, a call?
You're going to get a text.
Yeah, so texting is more reliable than cell phone.
You're going to get the text.
Correct.
You're going to hit it. It's going to bang you. So you're going to, you're going to be able to come up. You're going to go to it and, and respond to it. So it's not available in the system. Actually, it's pretty good. I mean, and it can get bigger and bigger. You can use it so you can say, I'm going to be there. I'm going to be there five minutes. I'm going directly to the phone. A lot of things you can do with it. Right now, the handiest thing is that if you don't have this, honey, you just want to carry this. You've got, you've got the call and you get the Google map and now you know where it's going to be. Which is really handy, especially when you're out of an area that you don't know about. We're traveling through Mutual Aid Call Down. It's very central here. And if I can hit that, I know where the address is where I might not know that area very well. Same, you know, vice versa, if they're coming up far away, they could hit that and say, all right, you know, I know where Cleverdale is and Fielding Road is, but it might not know, you know, if you're living down this way, you won't know that. But it is available. So talk to them and see if it's legit.
Are there big expenses related to that for you?
I, I don't know. I, I, we didn't spend a lot on it. I'm a treasurer, you know, thirty million dollars going up, no. So it's all provided, it's provided system. So I would say no. Okay. Yeah, I mean, everyone has to have a cell phone and we're having, it's our personal cell phone you're putting on. You're opting into the service, you know, as a volunteer. But, and there has been people, if they're on Verizon versus AT&amp;T or some spread. Some of them have problems where they are, but we're in a little bit more rural, you know, area out there that some of the cell phone services can be kind of heavy. But we all seem to use it. It comes out pretty well.
Okay. Any other questions for John?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Yes, sir. Back. Roman? 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 If the person in back here. I just want to make sure everyone gets a chance first, okay?
I was going to be quiet. Joe Maly, very central. I was the president when they brought this to our attention. So I think I should come up and set a couple of things straight first for this. The original siren we're hearing last during this town board meeting was before we shrank it down to five seconds. It does not sound like that anymore as loud as that. And it, we, we're trying to work with all the neighbors. George, fifteen people live in that area right around you. So that's what's actually up close, I was counting back down the back. We did work on it, the decimal system. We do have it as low as we can go. There are several other sirens. I live near Bay Ridge. I hear Bay Ridge sirens all the time. I hear Westland's falls from my house. I live down here on Berry Beach. So, I mean, there is, you can hear those sirens along with, yes, we do understand that. We're, we've been trying to figure out what to do, the best way to do it. Amanda, NFPA requires second mode of application. That is not part of the cell phone system. Because cell phones are unreliable, as John, they just say. We were the first company, one of the first companies in the county to use I am responding to do that. We thought, we even went to NFPA and asked them, well, that can't, no, it will not because of the gaps in cell service you have. That's the other thing too. There's a lot of gaps in this area with cell service. You can drive on Country Cup Road and lose cell service right now on Verizon, right at Country Cup and Sleepy. So.
I have three teenagers and I'm well aware where all the pockets of cell service are. I'm curious though, what, what say NFPA has over your companies?
It's part of our contract with you folks that we have to follow the NFPA guidelines as well too, all fire companies. And they are the National Fire Protection Agency, which before OSHA is NFPA. So that's, that's basically what it is. That's who gives us our air cap qualifications, our interior firefighter, our exterior firefighter, what we have to carry out of trucks. They, they give us all those rules. We have it trying to figure out how to, how to do that. That's why it only goes off nine AM and nine PM. We were not the only fire company in this town that did not get dispatched that call. There were two fire companies that responded ten minutes into that call. And that was, there was a structured fire when possible in Trac, I believe, in one of the neighboring towns. So there were two fire companies that did not hear the original town, the original call because of the failure of the dispatching. For that, so that's the one, that is the one reason for everything. Also, it may be, if you go, I checked with Brian on this, it may be one of the only civil defense warnings in the area too, still for that. And you have the dam up above, upper pond dam, and you have, you also have the Glenn's Falls arena, as was pointed out to you. If those go out, fastest warning everybody is just, not just texting us, it's like, we'll be that siren. To warn the, warn the civilians, the, the people to, if something's up. Prospect Schools was mentioned. Prospect Schools wants our siren to go off. That's why it's still going during school hours because they crossed that street. They know when they cross that street that there's the potential that there's emergency traffic coming down that way. So they will push those kids farther across, across that road, get them into the buildings so that way they're out of the road. That was brought, so we went and talked to Prospect School about that. So I hope all this helps give you a little more history behind it. Dave does, I did email Dave to copy the NFPA guidelines so he'll be able to send it out to the two as well.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for me from here? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Roman?
I'll be the first one to write a check for the texting system. Seriously. You need the money and that siren goes off on it. You have my word.
Well, we got it on record, Roman.
You got it? All right. And the NFPA, if that siren is off for seven years and they were not in compliance, what good is the NFPA?
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yep.
Yes, sir?
I would die.
Did you have a question?
What's the response time where there is a professional fire department like Glenn's Falls? I bet you it's like within five and five minutes, fifty seconds. I bet you our great fire companies in the town of Queensberry are within eight or nine minutes of that. I bet you they don't turn out lacking people. They do not need the siren. You have authorized enough money to pay for probably two thirds of the Glenn's Falls Fire Department. I realize you're covering five times the size, but it's the same population and we have great volunteers. If it was up to all of you, I would give them three percent and turn off the silence. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, anybody through YouTube? Five one eight, seven six one eight two two five. Anybody through Zoom? I talked to my computer. That's where the Zoom people are, right here. All right, hearing, no more on behalf of the public. I'll close the public hearing. Town board?
I'm certainly not going to not pass this budget, but we obviously have to figure this out. So, I mean, we, we can't, you know, penalize these guys, but we need, we need to work on it.
We, like I said, we tried before and we'll try again. Okay, so is that a motion to approve?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Councilperson Metterbeer, seconded by Councilperson Preer. Roll call, vote on this, please, Rose.
Councilperson Preer.
Yes.
Peron.
It does not make any sense to vote no. I will vote yes, but under duress.
McGee.
Yes.
Straugh.
Yeah.
Metter.
Oliver George, yes.
All right. Public hearing two point four. When you get a chance, Rose?
Public hearing on 2021 through 2025, air protection service agreement between the town of Queensberry and South Q volunteer fire company, Inc.
And again, here too, this great group of people, men and women, volunteering their service. And we've had to work very closely with South Q over the past five years. I mean, we all know that the building needed severe attention. Do we have the kind of funding to replace the building? Well, we investigated that. It turned out to be very expensive in this day and age. So they sat down and worked with us and they said, all right, what we can do is meet the budget that you're comfortable with and we'll renovate the current building. And we're going to change some things around so that they're going to have a much nicer firehouse. So they're taking out a loan for this. It's part of their debt service. They've got this in their budget. So their three year budget, again, it's a two percent increase above the aggregate.
Five years, John.
It's a five year. Thank you for correcting me. We get into that three year mode. It's five year per South Q because the bank insisted on a five year contract. So again, we did the two percent. So it's what's being proposed for 2021 is $383,812. For 2022, it's $391,488. For 2023, it's $399,318. For 2024, it's $407,304. And for 2025, it's $115,450. So I want to thank everybody for working with us. You know, there were times when we felt a little frustrated, but everyone stayed professional. I got to give South Q credit, but we got through it. We are where we are today. So is, I'll open the public hearing on South Queensbury Volunteer Fire Company's proposed fire protection service agreement between the town and themselves for a five year period. I've read you the numbers. Is there any member of the public here tonight that wishes to speak to this proposed contract with South Queensbury Volunteer Fire Company? Seeing none present, YouTube, again, area code five one eight, seven six one, eight two two five. While we're waiting for somebody to call in, and remember, your number has to show up on the caller ID screen. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak to South Queensbury's proposed five year contract? What did I do wrong?
What? Nothing.
Okay, I don't see anybody in Zoom. I don't hear anybody. I've given the audience who was present an opportunity to speak to this. Town board thoughts before we go to a motion?
Just want to echo your, your comments about how this is part of, integral part of the community and, and I think the renovation will help the community in ways beyond the fire department. It'll certainly make the fire department more effective, but I have high hopes that it will be a catalyst to some real re-energizing of that part of, of Queensbury.
That too. But you also spurred a thought that I needed to mention. It wasn't mentioned before, but I'm taking off of you in that these buildings service as safe harbors. We've had, you know, hurricanes that came up here. Fortunately, they're rare. We've had huge storm events and we've had ice storms and we use their buildings for safe havens. So they have generators built in. They have big public restrooms. They have big rooms. They even have water storage and they, they are prepared to serve the public in the event of something horrible happening globally. They are places of safe haven or safe harbor, whatever you want to call it. So that, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so I closed the public hearing on South Queensbury, seeing no interest in the public to speak to this. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Councilperson Preer, seconded by Councilperson McGee. Roll call, vote on this, please, Rose.
Councilperson Peron.
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Straugh?
Yes.
Metterbeer?
Yes.
And Preer?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the public hearings for tonight. Next, we have 11 resolutions. And I will describe each resolution. And then I'll give the public an opportunity to speak to the resolutions. If you're here for another town issue that's not related to the resolutions, I will give you an opportunity to speak to the town board about that at the end of the meeting. This portion of the meeting, however, is only to the resolutions before us tonight. So I'll explain each one and if you wish to leave, you're welcome to do so. That's, that's okay. So Rose, Resolution four point one, please.
So Resolution authorizing modification of policy related to, policy related to carryover earned vacation days to 2021 due to COVID-19 pandemic.
All right. We've been told that we have one of the best COVID plans of any municipality in the northern area. And we've been told that by professionals who would know other one. I have to give credit to this town board. I have to give credit to our town managers. I have to give credit to our town employees, all who helped develop the plan, abide by the plan, and so far, so good here in our town hall. We've been able to provide the services that the public expects, wants, demands, yet keep our workers safe and keep the residents safe from our workers. We've been able to do all that. It wasn't easy. And as you know, there was a time period where some people did some of their work remotely. There's times when some of our employees felt they may have had exposure to COVID and we wanted them to isolate and stay home. There are many circumstances why people didn't take their vacation. So some of the employees came to me and they said, listen, if we all try and cram in our vacations before the end of the year, it's going to be tough on you. And I said, you're right, it is. Is there any chance we could extend some of our vacation time and use it next year? And we'll cross our fingers and hope the world becomes a better place. And I said, I'll ask the town board. I canvassed them and they thought that this was a good idea, but they have yet to vote on this. on this. Again, so this is allowing employees, this is a policy to provide all town employees with additional flexibility regarding the use of earned but unused vacation days. Now, there are caveats. The town manager, the department manager, must either approve or disapprove, this combination for the employees within his or her department. All right, and you're going to be limited to five, and you have to use them sometime in 2021. And this is a one-time accommodation, if the town board approves it. That's what 4.1 is all about. 4.2?
Resolution authorizing engagement of Chief Pete's Lawn Care for one-time cleanup of mowing and mowing of abandoned and neglected property at One Edgewater Place.
All right, One Edgewater Place, again, Town Code 96-4, no person, firm, or corporation shall dump or deposit any awful garbage refuse of any kind upon any lands in the town of Queensbury except or upon land designated by the town of Queensbury as a town of Queensbury City of Glen Spalls landfill or transfer station. So, corrective action for this compliance violation is all junk garbage and discarded items in the rear yard must be removed. This is for One Edgewater Place. And so, one-time cleanup, this is for Chief Pete's Lawn Care to do a one-time cleanup, $275, initial mowing, $125, monthly lawn mowing, $75, not to exceed a total of $475 to clean up this place unless they clean it up themselves. A lot of times, we take this action, and the owner finally gets involved and cleans up the property. 4.3?
Resolution authorizing hiring of Cheryl Veely as full-time cleaner for Buildings and Grounds Department.
All right, we have a vacant full-time second shift cleaner position. Now, as you can imagine, in the times of COVID, we can't afford to lose a position in Building and Grounds, which is now responsible for a lot more things than they were last year at this time. They're responsible for cleaning things that are for public use, for cleaning plastic panels that separate the public from our employees. So, it's clean, clean, disinfect, disinfect, disinfect. A lot more work, we know we have to do it, and this vacant position needs to be fulfilled. So the facilities manager, the building and grounds manager posted availability for the vacant position, reviewed resumes, applications, interviewed candidates, and is recommending that this town board approve the hiring of Cheryl Veely. 4.4?
Resolution authorizing intermunicipal agreement between the town of Queensbury and Village of Hudson Falls for shared water supply services, machinery, equipment, supplies, and support personnel.
We have a very long and strong relationship with the Village of Hudson Falls. We each have what the other needs sometimes, and we don't necessarily have to go out and buy it. We can borrow theirs, they can borrow ours, and we might be talking about water supply machinery or equipment. If it's not being used, why not let them use it, and vice versa? So, this goes for machinery, exchanging machinery, equipment, supplies, the town ability, and so we can avoid buying and purchasing this equipment, this supply machinery and equipment. It avoids us keeping them in inventory. If they have them or we have them and we share, it is a lot more cost-effective for the taxpayers, and it makes a lot more sense to share this equipment. So this is a five-year term, a continuation, we already have five years, this is continuing another five-year term, in agreement with the Village of Hudson Falls. 4.5?
Resolution authorizing adoption of retention and disposition schedule for New York local governments' records, LGS-1.
All right, so we're adopting really what we have to adopt. The New York State Archives is revising and consolidating its local government records retention and disposition schedules, and issuing a single comprehensive retention schedule for all of New York State local governments, including the town of Queensbury. So it is entitled Retention and Disposition Schedule for New York Local Governments, or LGS-1, which will supersede and replace fire schedules effective August 1st, 2020. So this resolved is that, in accordance with 57-A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law, the town of Queensbury, or the town board hereby authorizes the adoption of the retention and disposition schedule for New York local governments, which contains legal minimum retention periods for local government records. So, this is adopting what we really legally have to adopt in terms of legal times involved with retaining our records. 4.6?
Resolution authorizing advertisement of bids for heavy haul truck tractor for Town Highway Department.
All right, our old truck, or tractor, truck, if you wish to call it that, this is the big, heavy mover, it's the tractor trail, it's what you see out there. Well, we need that to pull out our equipment. We have a paper, we have a front-end loader, we have things that weigh tons, they need to be transported to where they're needed. How old was our old, which we don't even have one now, it's shot?
It was a late model, 1992 GMC bought used from Washington County.
All right, it was 1992, I don't seem to think I need to say anymore. So, we're looking for a used one, we don't need a new one, something 215 or newer, I will consider, we're looking really at the price and its capability, and we have a whole what's required of it available. All right, so this is to put out to bid, all right, this is not to purchase one yet. It'll come before the town board, once we feel comfortable with one that we like. All right, 4.7?
Resolution authorizing promotion of Scott Rowland from mechanic to working supervisor in Town Highway Department.
All right, Scott Rowland's next in line, the Highway Superintendent David Doolittle, who is present at this meeting, thank you, David, and is Deputy Mark Penwer, or is here. Oh, Scott's here. Well, over the podium, I thought it was Mark. All right, well, okay, so I can't say anything bad about him. I can't, there's nothing for me to say bad about Scott. He's an amazing person, he's an amazing mechanic, he's amazing with everything he does, and if this town board approves him for the position of foreman, he'll be amazing there too. 4.8?
Resolution authorizing travel policy during COVID-19 pandemic.
All right. You know, there's 30-some odd states where you shouldn't go to because the COVID levels are too high. And I have employees come to me, and they said, gee, I'd like to go to California, or I want to go to Florida. All right, fine, you're going to go, and then you're going to be isolated for two weeks when you get back, and you're not using our time, you're going to use your time. So if you've got sick time, you've got vacation time, whatever, you're going to use that. So this is a policy telling them that if you consciously go to a state that you're not supposed to, and you come back to work, and you may jeopardize the rest of us, you're not going to do that, you're going to stay home. So if an employee visits a restricted state, then upon their return, they will be required to quarantine for a period of 14 calendar days, consistent with the Department Health Regulations for Quarantine. And that's part of this policy. The 14-day quarantine time will be enforced, that particular employee will not be paid for this quarantine time, nor can they use vacations, sick days, personal days, or floating holidays. Employees will be responsible for their share of benefits to be paid during that paid period. So, this is in line with what the other municipalities are doing, and it's our travel policy if it gets passed by the town board tonight. 4.9, please?
Resolution approving auto-bills warrants of 8/14/2020 and 8/18/2020.
All right, with run dates of August 14th, 2020, and August 13th, 2020, and payment dates of August 18th, totaling $933,404.64, and $1,206,239.64, respectively. And 4.10?
Resolution setting public hearing on proposed local law to amend Queensbury Town Code to establish renewable energy systems and facility regulations.
All right, this will be online. I want, I could have a public hearing on this until the end of September, okay? September 28. As I want to give the public ample time to review this, I want to give the running part ample time to review this, I want to give the county ample time to review this, and I want the public, so I want to get it out there as soon as possible. So, I want to thank Craig Brown and Harrison Freer for keeping this thing going, and it was something that the town board, so we've all worked on this before as well, but they kept it going. So here it is. So, how do I summarize this thing? All right. It doesn't apply so much, it's called renewable energy law because then, once we establish that written that way, we can use it for wind, we can use it for other renewable sources that may come up. But specifically, this kind of deals mostly with solar for right now, but like I said, it can deal with other things. So rooftop solar, no significant changes there, they're pretty much open, they're pretty much allowed. This talks to ground-mounted, freestanding solar and thermal panels. So, minimum lot size, one acre, 75-foot setback, none in the front yard, height restrictions to 12-foot for ground-mounted, freestanding. We're allowing this in all the zones, screening has to be in harmony with the neighborhood, total square footage of the solar entity, the solar facility will not exceed the building's square foot. Now, solar farms are treated differently, but they're treated in this proposed law. They're allowed in three zones, heavy industrial, commercial, light industrial, and light commercial. And we're talking about solar farms, that's one megabot or greater. You need a minimum of five acres. There are no specific setbacks because where these are being proposed right now, the old landfill on Richwell, the airport area, and Subagagi, and the town property over here, and vegetables, they're looking at solar in those areas right now. They have nothing farm, they're just looking. So, you know, the solar farm will be, have to go through a special use permit, it will have to go through planning board approval, this is for a solar farm. All right, so, all of this happened, there was, over in the south side of Queensbury, there was somebody that put a rather large solar facility in their backyard. It really was obtrusive and kind of out of character with the rest of the neighborhood. We did our site visit, we viewed it, we agreed with the complainants, and we're doing something about it. We're proposing this law which will prohibit that kind of thing from happening again. All right, so there will be a public hearing, if this town board sets a public hearing tonight, there'll be a public hearing on this on September 28. 411?
Resolution rescinding Resolution Number 252, 2020, and authorizing outsourcing of milling and/or paving work and purchase of related materials.
Okay. We had an agreement to pave four of our roads, and we were outsourcing some of our paving for a variety of reasons. One, it's more efficient, but two, a lot of our guys have been involved with COVID pickup services, if you will. We spent six weeks, or more than six weeks, on just pickup. So, we've gotten backed up, we need to outsource, we have monies from the federal and state government. So, Harrison pointed out that last time we went through and approved this, that there was an error. He felt there might be an error, he wasn't sure. So, to be on the safe side, we listened to Harrison, and we took a second look at it. And it turns out that the paving was done right, but the milling needed to go to, there was no state contract that covered the milling. However, there was county contract that covered the milling. So, we redid the process, and actually, thank you, Harrison, because we saved between the prices and our set aside, we set aside 5%, we may not spend that, but we're looking at it, saving almost up to $85,000. Thank you. All right, so here's how it goes. We're talking about four roads here that we're going to contract out, Garrison Road, Ernie Lane, Lusser Road, and Highland Springs Way. They all need to be ground, they're in bad shape, they can't be just repaved. So, we're hiring Peckham to do the paving, and we're hiring Reifenberg to do the milling. All of this is in accord with state and piggybacking rules and regulations. So, Reifenberg will do the milling for $53,131.65 per county bid for cold milling payment for highway rehabilitation, that's Warren County-11-19. We complete paving and traffic control, that includes traffic control as well, by the way, Reifenberg, to Peckham for the amount of $108,160 per New York State Office of General Services Group Number 31502, award number 23148 pricing. And then, the material, it's a type 6, top course material, asphalt and delivery, and this is according to county bid for the amount of $215,224.80 per Warren County bid, 1WC-12-20 pricing, for a total of $376,516.45. Now, we're also authorizing a 5%, you know, change order situation because it happens with law construction, a 5% contingency, so in this case, it's $18,826, we may or may not spend that, but I'm just adding it to the package for a total of $395,342.45, which is $84,936.43 less than the other bid. So not only is this the right way to go, it's the cheaper way to go. Again, thank you, Harrison. All right, if it gets approved by the town board tonight, and the Highway Superintendent is here, if there's any questions. Okay, so those are the 11 resolutions before the town board tonight. Would you run out of film?
No.
No? So we got another roll on the background, if you need more film. All right, so, now I'll open up the 11 resolutions for public discussion. Is there anybody present tonight that would like to speak to any of the 11 resolutions before this town board tonight? Anybody present? All right, those people watching YouTube, Erico 518, you can call in your question or share your thoughts, it may not be your question, 518-761-8225. Anybody on Zoom, raise the blue hand. Anybody on Zoom, raise the blue hand here? Any questions on the eleven resolutions before the town board tonight? All right, while we're waiting, I see none so far, I hear none so far. Any town board thoughts on any of the eleven resolutions, or any ones that you want to speak to Harrison?
John, I just have a question for David with regard to four point six in terms of, I understand that we don't have that vehicle, we don't have that capability on, on hands currently, is that true? The ninety-two, the ninety-two vehicle, it's
Tractor trailer.
Tractor trailer or not? So what are we doing? My question is, what are we doing as an interim?
Yes, Dave Doyle, Councilor, Highway Superintendent. The current vehicle that we have will not pass inspection
Right.
due to frame issue.
I get that.
And we have restocked the county, I don't know, a couple events. They have moved our, one of our dump trucks, had to go down to Caterpillar, get some repair done to it. I utilized Scott Bernard in the water department in his truck and trailer for moving our excavator and things like that, as John said, to move our paver around. The twenty ton trailer that they have is very high, very unstable to use. We have our own thirty ton trailer that we use for this.
Yeah, so my, my point and question here is, my, my sense is, you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this out for bid, but the, the follow-up is, how often do we need that big vehicle that we can't either borrow or rent from somebody else? Right? This is sort of a shared services question for me, and that if the county can do it and we only use it twice a month, you know, does it make sense for us to have a, a vehicle in our lot? Or maybe we make a deal with the county that when there's breaks, you know, we have some kind of shared services here instead of everyone having these big vehicles that we only use on rare occasions? That's, that's my point. And I would suggest that if I had to move whatever you have, I could find somebody here locally in the commercial market to move it for you tomorrow. Now, that's a change in the way we do business because we're sort of staying, you know, self-contained, but there's, there's plenty of commercial people out there that can move virtually anything.
Yes, correct, at a fee.
Right, at a fee, exactly. So we're gonna have to balance, you know, the cost.
Convenience, yes.
Right.
To have this at our disposal, I feel is necessary.
Right.
You know, we can just, if I have something break down, I go out in our yard, I load it on trailer, I take it where I need it.
Right.
You know, if we go to Fort Miller, which we go over there, we purchase drainage equipment, huge cement drywells, concrete, they're four feet in depth and like eight feet around. We can put two or three, four on our trailer that we, I mean, for drainage
Right.
purposes as well. As I said, I, I feel it's necessary to utilize that, our, you know.
Well, we'll see what kind of bid you get, and we'll have to do some cost benefit trade-offs in my
Well, the other thing too is the action, the emergency situations.
Okay, that's fine.
So, you know, you don't want to be looking for something to transport the, what you need to this site if you need it now.
I get it, I get it.
Well, yeah, in the wintertime, John, if we have a breakdown, you know, we'll be able to, you know, like a night at D B to go retrieve that vehicle, bring it back to our shop.
I, I'm just, I'm just getting us to think about more efficiency and more shared services mentality because the mentality that I see right now is, hey, we're self-contained, and that's good if we can afford it, but who knows what we can afford, and we gotta do that cost benefit analysis.
Right.
What is the productivity issue also though? It's gonna take you more time with smaller vehicles to move as much as you can move with the larger ones, is that correct?
Yes, correct. I mean, our, our big excavator, our big trucks, our paver, our heavy stuff, things like that, plus our medium-sized equipment that, that has a weight capacity over, over ten thousand pounds, you know, to, to move around, that takes, you know, we have two seven ton trailers, not a large enough trailer, even for our medium stuff, equipment.
Is there some sort of log that is kept for the work that this particular trailer does?
A log?
So that you could compare how often, how often is it used? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Dave. Any other questions or thoughts on any eleven resolutions?
I was just gonna joke that we should pull four seven, but stop. You're a great guy, and congratulations.
I did just still have the one question on four point eight, which I did by email. And that is, if a town employee were to take a vacation long enough that a state changed, and the governor said Minnesota's on the list, and they've gone to Minnesota to visit their aunt, I'm assuming there would be some sort of exception if they got permission from their supervisor and then returned and had to quarantine.
Yeah, the way the law's written is, you went there, they're already on a restricted list.
Right, if they become restricted while you're there
That doesn't apply.
Then I'm happy.
Okay. Good question.
Thank you.
And if the answers are any resolutions you would like to have vote for, or hold vote for, for whatever reason? All right, then who would like to move approval of resolutions four point one to four eleven? All right, Councilperson McGee
Second.
made the motion, seconded by Councilperson Brown. Roll call vote on those eleven resolutions, approval of those eleven resolutions, please, Rose.
Councilperson McGee?
Yes.
Stroud?
Yes.
Metavier?
Yes.
Freer?
Yes.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, good. Any correspondence, Rose?
Yes, I have two things. I have the building and code supervisors report for July. It's been received in the town clerk's office and will be on file. And today, August seventeenth, Helene Dubin submitted a letter and petition for a crosswalk on Assembly Point Road. This too will be on file in the town clerk's office.
Okay, thank you, Rose. All right, now we go to privilege of the floor. If there's a town issue that you wish to speak to the town board about, this is the opportunity to do so. It's called privilege of the floor. I will do it in order of those people present, and we already have one, Heager Person. And then I will go to you two, and you have the call-in number, five one eight seven six one eight two two five. And then people who are on Zoom, if you just raise your blue hand, if you have a question for us dealing with any town topic. First, present, ma'am, would you like to come forward? Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Helene Dubin.
You have to speak in the microphone, please. All right, now, your name is?
Helene Dubin.
Okay. Helene, I think I know what your issue is, but if you would, just tell the public.
Okay. Good evening, Supervisor Stroud, board members, and Queensberry residents. I'm Helene Dubin. I have been seasonal resident of Assembly Point for thirty-five years. My husband Scott for nearly sixty. Tonight I am speaking for both of us on how to make Assembly Point Road safer. We are requesting that the town paint marked crosswalks and install warning signs at two of the intersections on Assembly Point Road. Assembly Point runs north-south along the west bank of Harris Bay on Lake George. I, I, my husband drew some maps if they need to be distributed.
Oh, that's great, yeah, just give them to Rose and we'll get them. Thank you.
Just a small section.
Yeah.
First would be at the T at the intersection of Sunset Lane and the second at the T Knox Road. We submitted a letter to accompany the petition signed by seventy-three Assembly Point residents. Many were not available due to COVID. Please refer to the letter with the links to studies that encourage the use of crosswalks at these, at the Sunset Lane intersection especially. There are thirty-three docks along Assembly Point Road. Families access them by crossing the road and going down a staircase through the water. At the intersection of Sunset Lane and Assembly Point Road, forty-four families crossed to share one staircase to use the dock. To leave the waterfront, it is especially dangerous coming up the stairs onto the road, there is no buffer. In addition, all vehicles heading north on the point must turn left or go straight at Sunset Lane. During the summer months, there is a higher volume of walkers, bicyclists, runners, cars, and commercial vehicles. There are no sidewalks, stop signs, shoulders, or warning lights. We of Assembly Point are not asking for an enhanced crosswalk with blinking lights. We only seek white lines and signs to alert motorists to yield to people crossing the road. Crosswalks are a low-cost solution to decrease speed, improving the safety of both pedestrians and motorists. It is important to us that Assembly Point Road become an example of the complete streets concept. This occurs when the whole community respects everyone's right to share the road safely. On a daily basis, families can be seen crossing the road with children, two-轮, kayaks, and strollers. There are vulnerable residents with disabilities who have expressed concerns about going to the dock or taking walks due to the traffic on Assembly Point Road. Cars often drive well above the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. We want to see all our neighbors feel secure in this unique community, especially since more people are now living all year round on the point. According to Lieutenant Robert Smith from the sheriff's office, the use of crosswalks is a safe option. Crosswalks have worked for people crossing at intersections in Lake George Village, Glenn's Falls, and for cyclists along bicycle trails. There is a misperception that a crosswalk creates false sense of security. Lieutenant Smith advised me that in his experience and professional opinion, people are mindful and exercise their duty to look for oncoming cars before crossing at a crosswalk in an intersection. He gave permission for me to use his name and support our cause. It is our hope that we'll people not take an injury or fatality for the town to treat this issue seriously. Our mission, and that of the seventy-three people who signed the petition, is to prevent a tragedy. To sum up, our three main points are, first, complete streets, we all share the road. Second, the town can approve of traffic safety at the waterfront inexpensively. Third, research indicates crosswalks are safe. For these reasons, we respectfully request that the town approve traffic safety on Assembly Point Road. This can be accomplished inexpensively by painting crosswalk lines at Sunset Lane and at Knox Road and posting warning signs. Thank you all very much.
Helene, you're asking for two crosswalks?
I am.
I see a picture here of one on Sunset.
Knox Road.
But the other one, is that Knox Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is. And that's where people start coming to a stray away along Assembly Point Road.
And Scott did draw a picture of that one?
No.
Okay.
He's my artist.
All right, so
I do have additional maps of Assembly Point Road from Google Maps, and that indicates both intersections.
Well, we've run across this before, there are more than one schools of thought, and I'm not saying this is a good idea or a bad idea. There is a school of thought that if you put a crosswalk in, it emboldens some of the pedestrians because they do, by fact and by law, have the right of way, by golly. So sometimes, some of them use that and put themselves in peril and at risk. Where the argument exists, if you don't have the crosswalks, then people do due process of being careful. They will look both ways, they will not make assumptions like they have the right of way, and by golly, he better, or she better stop.
Yes, I understand that people do have an attitude in the sense of entitlement. I do agree with you on that point.
Yeah.
However, because of this unique community, and within the peninsula, there is the Shore Colony community, the area of Sunset Lane that primarily courses that road. And because we're with this unique community, we also have meetings two times a year, we have president, we have a board, and we have the opportunity to educate and remind everyone through email, through this meeting, that there will hopefully be a crosswalk, and that their children and even themselves, the adults more than the children, have to be aware that they cannot expect traffic to stop. My biggest concern really has been the children crossing just even a foot ahead of their parents, where parents know they, they had their kids, but they're also holding towels and floats and other pieces of equipment. So there's just that one step out, especially because little walls on both sides at the end of Sunset Lane, where traffic, oncoming traffic cannot see you. So it really protects everybody. There are motorists who have indicated to me that they have, you know, almost hit someone because they can't only see someone coming up the steps at the dock. Whether it be a dock along Assembly Point, the entire Assembly Point Road, but especially at Sunset Lane, because it's so busy there.
And the town has a dock up there, oh, it's part of our supply line for the Shore Colony water system.
That's one of the
And we put a new stairway in a couple of years ago for that. So I can assure you that a forthcoming hot day, this town board will be doing site visits. Bring your suits, we got the town done. And enjoy Lake George with you, but our intent will be to take a look at your safety questions that you bring up in terms of Assembly Point Road, and we will give that a very close look, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I appreciate that, because I am a pedestrian, I am a driver, and I am a bicyclist.
And you smile when you talk to us, and that helps a lot.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
Yes. Anybody else wish to speak to the town board who are present about any town topic? And sir?
Good evening.
Related, right?
We are related.
The Nabaskis, let me guess.
Yes, Jennifer James Dobkowski, A-trails, and we wanted to talk to the board again about the short-term rental situation we're dealing with, and again, express our thanks to those of you who've been very attentive to our emails and updates on our personal situation. And just as a reminder, we, we chose to live in our residential neighborhood up on West Mountain because we wanted peace and quiet, privacy and safety, and we have lost all three. It's only been going on eight months, five of which were pandemic, and it has just become near impossible to feel like I can keep my children safe throughout this. And as I've stressed before, the owner of the guest here next door to us is so attentive. He responds to complaints within two or three minutes sometimes, and immediately addresses the people causing the issue next door. The main thing is, parents have a right to know who is in their neighborhood when they have children. These businesses cannot be near families because there's no way to control who's coming and going. There's no sex offender limitations on who can be a guest there. We really have no way of knowing what's going on there. And tourists and guests do not have the same respect about the community and the neighborhoods as people who live there do. And Councilperson Metavier, I heard what you experienced on the lake two weeks ago. Those people stay next door to me, if you're wondering where they are. So now, when we go home, instead of feeling relaxed, we start getting stressed out and offended and just, you know, it's just not fair to the kids. In the last three days, my kids have heard loud music with obscenities. That was seven forty-five this morning, they've heard swearing on Friday, people bragging about how drunk they were in the middle of the day. That's not an offense on the STR law. That we didn't complain about until the person started going, and the owner immediately got on, you know, the guest case. But we really need to have zones where families can enjoy residential areas free from unsupervised and uninspected motels, and we need zones for vacationers to be able to relax and enjoy themselves as well without the fear and the inevitable disturbing of the neighbors.
You know, I just wanted to do some statistics about Airbnb's. One in five check-ins beat the complaint with Airbnb. That's either a guest or an owner, that doesn't count That doesn't count neighbors. There was a Twitter poll asking if people would want to live next door to an Airbnb. Eighty-seven percent of the people said they would never want to live next to an Airbnb. But here's the statistic that I thought was even more powerful. Zero said definitely, not definitely yes. So that was one of the choices on Twitter. Nobody said definitely yes. And here's the one I think that everyone should keep in mind. Since 2019, there's been 123 shootings at Airbnbs. So we understand that this is a tourist culture, but we also think, you know, we've been hearing all night about safety with children and safety overall, and I think our children need to be protected. And like we said, we have a host that's on it right away, but you can't open up that barn, close that barn door after your kid hears all these obscenities. So sex, I mean, we've had neighbors having sex that, you know, were vocal.
Honesty.
Honesty. I mean, the host dealt with it properly, but, you know, it's a family neighborhood. And, you know, and I know it seems like we're the only people at times that are complaining. We have a neighbor that sends us texts when there's a problem. I guess they just don't want to get involved. When we spoke the last time, when my wife spoke the last time, we, you know, because our last name is pretty unique, kind of like Medevir, I guess. And so we got phone calls, you know, because they could just look us up. So people started calling. I don't know if they call you, but they call us and they text us. So our neighbor sent us a text. Had to speak to the Airbnb at 3:15 the other night, tell them to be quiet. We didn't hear it because we've had to move our bedrooms to the back. So we're actually spending the summer in our guest room, and our children are living in a living room. Just because traffic goes back and forth all the time, and we're in a unique situation where we co-own a piece of property with the Airbnb owner, so their people have to come by our house. They're leaving at 3 o'clock in the morning, you know. So, you know, and I know I've sent you guys a whole bunch of stuff, statistics, so I'm not going to get into it, but I think if we start focusing on where these are located and, you know, thinking about families and maybe not have STRs next to families, that would be an awesome second step. You know, we were here when the bill was passed the first night, and we were told that was a first step, and it is helpful and, like, you know. But we're in that loophole of a family next to basically a business in a residential neighborhood who has a host that's attentive, but as we know, we can't control these vacationers. And sometimes I almost go guilty asking vacationers to stop because we've all been on vacation. They need a place to go that they can kind of let go and enjoy themselves. In a residential neighborhood, at least where we live, that's not the location. So I don't know if a rule can be put in place where it can't be by children of a certain age or by schools.
I, that would be extremely difficult.
But how do you protect children?
How do we know who has children and who doesn't? How do we know if that doesn't change from week to week and month to month? How would we know that? If we made a law saying, okay, you can't have a short-term rental next to a residence within, say, 100 feet that has a family, how are we possibly going to regulate that? How are we possibly?
Well, the person couldn't buy it for that person. Like, the person who bought our neighbor's house in an LLC.
So now we can tell people who can buy their house and who can't buy their house?
No, what we're saying is, we live in a residential neighborhood. It's a business that is next door to us. So the town is allowing a business. You regulate Airbnbs.
Right.
You regulate hotels. You can say where they're allowed to be and where they can't be. So now, this is a business. So since it's a business, why can't you say that business cannot be next to the family? You already regulate businesses.
All right, well, let me just say that we will give your consideration, do thoughtful ness, and consider it.
Can I just add? I will take the solar panels and the sirens any day over what we've been dealing with on a regular basis. Overflowing septic, because guests flushed the ball down the toilet, clogged the septic sewage overflowing towards our property for about three weeks. It took till that was resolved. So, you know, it seems like this is something that's, you know, a big safety issue and, you know, it's not, and it has been addressed, and I know it's.
Yeah, so we've had code enforcement over there, and they have said that they're going to work at making things better.
And this law, you know, has only been on the books, so my position remains the same that I shared in the email, in that zoning is part of the problem, registration is part of the problem. Well, we have to do this in sort of, you know, a town-centric view, right? So we appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
We're not the only people in the town with kids, and, you know, we're presenting a situation that could possibly affect somebody else.
I think this could be equally distressing to people without children, so I wouldn't limit the potential of disruption and offense. I think that short-term rentals came fast and furious at municipalities that weren't necessarily ready, and I think, you know, when I got the email about the septic, I immediately turned around. John said, oh my goodness, that could be a public health issue, and I think there are some times when it may seem like we're moving really slowly, but our feet are paddling under the water. And just like listening to the people about the sirens, I can't imagine dealing with that where I live, where I go to have my peace, and now where I am 24 hours a day because I'm now working from home. So completely appreciate that. There are other rights that will get infringed on if we don't look at this.
Holistically.
Holistically. Hopefully, your children don't enter puberty before we figure out how to do this. You know, I understand how frustrated you are and.
There is predator laws, and there's got to, and so hotels probably have a rule as far as predator laws, I would assume.
Nobody has ever asked me my background when I've checked into a hotel, so I think we may be opening.
My understanding is that hotels of a certain size get a certain number of points of, you know, you can have a three-point offender and a two-point, for a total of 11 points, depending, in the research that I've done, which has not been extended in New York State. So I know there, depending on the size of the hotel, they are permitted a certain number. But we didn't choose to live next to a hotel or a motel or a business, and we have motel staff coming and going from the property that this gentleman owns, so.
And it's year-round.
It's year-round. And, you know, I know.
Well, that's another limitation, right? Could, we can restrict, you know? You can have, in a residential zone, we can have 90 days max of Airbnb, right? I mean, that's some of the stuff they did up at Lake Classic. Give us a chance, we understand.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate it. And I just want to.
You got a time?
I was going to compliment my councilperson.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
We allow you time to do that. You go Spartans. You knew my weak point, huh? All right, anybody else present today in here that would like to speak to the town board about any town topic? Okay, anybody at YouTube? Again, it's working. It's working.
Should I call them?
Where'd everybody go on Zoom?
You might not take yourself.
All right, well, it's almost done. So, all right, so let's, all right. We'll close privilege the floor and move on. Town board discussions, Tony, anything?
I actually want to compliment councilperson McGee. She's doing a great job. You're a little bit over a month into this. You jumped in with two feet, and I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
With your responsiveness and your intelligence, and you're a great addition to a great team because we have a great board, all of you, so.
Anything else, Tony?
Dave, as always, doing a great job. I cannot not say something about Dave because, you know, those guys, they rock, so. I'm, you know my feeling on crosswalks. I'm not going to get into it. I just, I just don't think it's a great idea. I just don't. Fifty-two years on Assembly Point. Three different times this week, I hung out for about an hour. Average hourly car rate, about 26 cars. I just, I just think it's a terrible idea. I actually also spent some time in the village, hanging out at the crosswalk there and see. You know, the problem is, in New York State, it's a law that you have to stop for pedestrians, but it's not a law in New Jersey and Maryland and other states that people are coming up here. So while we may know the law, other people don't. And these are the people that are on Assembly Point from Jersey and, you know, Maryland and Delaware, and I just, I just think it's a terrible idea, so I would not be in favor. But I may get very vocal, so if you guys want to go for it, fine. I'm only one of five, but I just, I think it's a terrible idea.
Okay, anything else, Tony?
Nope.
I just want to comment to that.
Yeah.
It's interesting, you know, about the crosswalk thing. I took notice of this a number of times. It's still not so much inbred in New Yorkers to stop when someone's in a crosswalk. Interestingly though, Vermonters, as soon as you step even on the curb, they stop automatically. Maybe they've had it longer than New York State has, I don't know, but I found that they're much more adaptive to that.
I did a lot of research over the last week when I got the email. Five out of every six pedestrians that are killed are killed in a crosswalk.
In a crosswalk.
I get that because what you're doing is funneling people, so it makes perfect sense that you're going to have more people killed in a crosswalk than you are otherwise. But the fact that five out of every six people are getting killed in a crosswalk mean, you know, to me, it just doesn't work. And I was riding through the village, and this family darted out in front of me, and I had to lock up my bike. I mean, I almost went over the handlebars. And it wasn't that I was speeding. I was, you know, I had just come around the corner, but my God, they jetted out in front of me, and I had to lock it up. And, and, you know, it could have been a very bad situation. Was I in the wrong? Perhaps, but the fact that they just never stopped, you know, they feel entitlement, that they have the right of way. And I just, the mentality, I, I, I just, I just think it's a terrible idea. But again, I'm only one of five.
Well, anything else, Tony?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Harrison?
I just want to mention that I enjoyed going to the Million Reasons rally that they had, Crandall Park on Saturday, and there were some excellent speakers, including the woman from the League of, or the League of Women Voters. And I learned a lot, and it was very bipartisan. There were some Ali's supporters, well-represented, and the talks were, I thought, excellent. And it was, it was a good getting out, if you will. So as we celebrate 100 years of, I think it's actually tomorrow, maybe, that 100 years of women's voting in the United States, long overdue.
Okay, Harrison, thanks. Anything else, Tony? All right, and Amanda, remind me, next time we start with you.
Don't start with me.
George?
We haven't had a meeting in a long, long time where we've been here at 9:05, right? So I'm going to take one for the team and just say, nothing.
Don't we do overtime this morning?
All right, I'm going to try and keep mine short, too. Amanda?
I was at the event. I thought it was very nice, and I would just also like to say that I was, and I saw what you posted, but I was on the lake Sunday morning. My kids have not had a lot of structure and were, I think, balancing, trying to get ready for school and also, and I'm not trying to burn the clock, I'm sorry, get them waking up. And so I said, how great would it be to go to the lake early so we could see it like glass? And so alarms went off at 5:00, and we were on the road by 6:00, so we were in Warner Bay by 6:20. Not as early as I wanted, but it was beautiful. And after we did that, we ended up going north, and we had the kids in the tube, and we saw a wall of boats. And it was, it was like hard to grasp what I was seeing because it looked like log bay, but it was in front of me, all the boats. And as we got closer, Sean said, we have to get the girls out of the tube. And we were hugging the eastern side of the lake, and when the group of boats came south, they were going so fast that there were six-foot swells, and we felt endangered. Tony and I have talked about the difference of the behavior on the lake, and I believe so fiercely in people's right to assemble and to voice opinions, but what I saw on the lake after the history of just a few years ago losing someone on the lake, I was deeply disappointed in people's disregard for other people's safety. That's all.
And I have to apologize. I did not, I was not on the lake on Sunday. I did not see what occurred. What I posted that you saw and Sean saw was very different than apparently what really occurred. And I did get some hate mail from people saying, you know, you have no idea of the destruction that occurred. I had no idea. So my apologies. What I had posted, I thought was a phedonium video, but obviously, it's not what occurred. And so my sincere apologies that Sean had said something to me about it. I had no idea.
I think it looked different from the air than the water, and I think we all have incredible opportunities to take a stand and have an impact, and I think the impact would have been so much stronger had there been a different level of organization.
And I think, obviously, you know, people don't have regard, and I think it probably, the whole situation obviously got out of control very quickly. But what I saw and what you experienced were two totally different things. And again, my apologies because I had no idea what actually ended up transpiring.
There was dock damage, and there were people who, but it's going to be interesting to see who has jurisdiction, because the Lake George Park Commission is having a meeting next week. What are they going to do? Luckily, not us, right?
But again.
I don't know what they would do.
I sincerely apologize to anybody that I offended because what I saw and what you guys obviously saw were two totally different things, and I was not up there. So I was removed from it. I just thought the video that I shared was pretty cool.
Yeah.
But the dock damage is not cool. And that if somebody got hurt, a poor man almost drowned because of it, not cool, so.
I do think that the good thing about these moments when something is threatened, whether it's how you feel in your home or how you feel in the community, it does drive home what a special place we have. You know, the lake is a beautiful resource, the trails, the safe neighborhoods, and I think when that is disrupted in any way, you kind of realize, hey, maybe I was being a little too complacent. Anyway.
I don't know if you're aware, what happened on Sunday or not. Have you heard anything?
I just saw it on TV, I mean, the flotilla of 250 boats.
Yes. And I guess it started out, you know, fine enough, but got out of hand pretty quickly.
Yeah, well.
I just want to pine on, I'm sorry.
Well, I rode my bicycle last Sunday, the Sunday before, up to the head of the lake. And usually, I'll cruise over to the Charles R. Wood Park and just hit the lake. I decided I'd take a right and watch them do the launching. I decided I'd take a ride and watch them do the launching. What entertainment that was, because it takes me about a half an hour to bike up and a half an hour to come back and I was gone for two hours. My wife says, "Where were you?" I says, "I got up there and I'm watching these people trying to take their boats out of the lake and some put their..." That is entertainment. I won't back up.
I've been there. It's, if you haven't done it, you've got to go.
Are you on Instagram?
I had Facebook and that went all wrong.
There's something called...
Don't go beyond...
No, it's the Jerry of the day.
I don't know anything about Instagram. Facebook, I can't get on. No, that's social media. I'm busy enough with the emails, but no, but it's crazy. It's crazy. And then I saw, and somebody was sharing with me what happened to the individual that drowned and it was a bunch of guys in a rental pontoon boat. And obviously, one of the guys was in distress, he's the one that drowned. And the guy was trying to start the pontoon boat, didn't know, he got to put neutral first. So, and it was windy and, you know, pontoon boat, and it dropped, so it wasn't good. So, yeah, there's some fine tuning that maybe that's an understatement. It needs to be done with these boats on Lake George going forward, I mean, for public safety reasons.
It's, it's, the whole lake is getting out of control. Everything about it.
Well, it's an unusual year. Even Mayor Blase, he's never seen anything like it, but the trash people leave behind. Of course, more poor people are eating out, they're getting takeout because they don't want mixed and they're trying to be compliant. But they leave the trash right there. They don't, you know, there might be a trash can 50 feet away. I don't know, you know, I'm somebody that, a little speck of paper. I put it in my pocket, wait till I find a trash can. I don't put anything out. But, so he says, he has to have cleanup crews every evening.
Yes.
Well, anyways, yeah, now we're all up and this is good, it's 12 after 9:00. Now it's my turn. Anything more, Amanda?
I'm done.
You've got four minutes, John.
I do have some good news. The town board financial report, our annual audit, good news, like it is every year. You know, they, in the audit, they say, "We have a liability and that is our dependence on sales tax revenue. We're heavily dependent on that. That makes us vulnerable." But, they said, "You have sufficient fund balances because you project ahead for when times are not so good to cover your bases." That's very good. So again, we've got an audit and I just received the final version just hours ago. The final version will be online, but, you know, basically, the audit's very good that what we're doing and the way we're doing things financially speaking is right up. Okay. I could have said more, I think that says it. AngioDynamics, George and I both read the Albany Business Review and both enjoy that. See the article on AngioDynamics just came out?
Yes.
Jim Klemmer, I've met Jim, I had to introduce him at one of the EDC morning functions. He's president and chief executive officer of AngioDynamics. And they are expanding. They're going in a very progressive future. They're forming a, they, they're working on laser knives and things like that. They want to change the way surgeons treat tumors and keep blood flowing to and from the heart, you know, during surgery. They are business, as they say, they're going to be built around innovating new and better products, medically related. They have invested $66 million to buy laser technology and to compete against some of the other giants like Medtronic and Boston Scientific. They've invested $8 million in our area. They're 32 years old. They put $1 million into the ninth floor of Monument Square Building at 333 Glen, the tallest building in the city. They're taking the whole floor. They have also spent in Queensbury, $67 million in renovating the place over by Floyd Bennett Airport. So it was a nice article, George, I think you would agree. So since Klemmer took over, annual research and development spending has grown 24% to almost $30 million. So the Auryon, I'm trying to pronounce it, I may mispronounce it, A-U-R-Y-O-N, which is the new laser. And they're looking for competing for a market, a $500 million market for peripheral artery disease. This will go into a blood vessel and remove the plaque. And it's estimated that will generate sales of $7 to $10 million by the end of Angio's next fiscal year, which is meant. I just wanted to share that, I thought that was good news. And like I said, George and I are always sharing news about business in Queensbury.
Well, I think EDC didn't, they have something about the fact that the per capita, the number of catheter companies or medical device companies in our area is one of the top in the country.
Yes, thank you, George. I forgot that, I read that, too. It says something. Now if only we had an expanded runway, huh? All right, that conversation for another day. All right, right-of-way information. I think, I don't know if it was, David, you wanted me to share this? As our winter season approaches, the town of Queensbury Highway Department would like to issue a friendly reminder. Obstacles in the town's right-of-way can be dangerous. All right, what is the town's right-of-way? We have two kinds of roads, a road-by-use, which are the older roads. So if you live in a subdivision, you're probably in a newer road where we have dedicated roads. That road is 50 foot, the right-of-way is 50 foot wide. So go to the center of the road. Walk 25 feet towards your house. Now you're probably standing 12 foot onto your front lawn. You're probably still standing on town property. Yes, you've maintained the lawn and you may even have shrubbery there. You've got shrubbery and a lawn in the town right-of-way, which is okay. But when they inhibit our plowing, that's not okay. So any obstacles within 10 feet of the edge, try and keep those clear. All right. There's some other issue. Dave Wilcox, and I don't share that with the town board, he's got some issues, too. And, and, all right, so, here comes one, I'll say Jane, I don't want to say the person's name, I didn't get their permission. Hello, Mr. Dool, talking about highway superintendent, Dave Dool. Many thanks to you and your crew for improving the drainage gutter at the end of my driveway at 36 Monterey. Please convey to the men that I think they did a beautiful job. The added height looks good and I really appreciate how clean and tidy the whole thing is. Nice edges. Thanks also for clearing out the gutter where it goes into the woods. That'll be a big help in coming months. Last of all, I don't know if your crew was responsible for the new hydrant paint, but what a beauty it is now. I think Harrison's responsible for that. So again, and I've heard comments about how professional your crew is, that, you know, there was a tree down and not only did your crew take up care of the tree, they cleaned the road up and everything. Here it is. All right, so I've been here seven years as town supervisor, 10 years as town councilman, three years as planning board member, yeah, that's 20 years I've been here. So when I came in, a lot of work needed to be done. We've gotten a lot of work done. People have said to me, you know, "You've done a lot of things in seven years to get this town in shape." Well, me and the town board, nothing, nobody does anything alone. It's only when you have a community up. So when I came in, the experience level, which means your rate of accidents is 1.5, okay, that's 50% higher than it should be. Our workman compensation went up 300%. And so that problem was handed in our laps. All right, I'd like to mention that our experience modification now is .84. It is, our safety record is better than that. And our workman compensation, I've got all kinds of graphs here to prove it, but I don't know, Joel can take a snapshot of that and these go up, but anyhow, this is our incurred losses per year, all right? So in 2013, our incurred losses were about $900,000. Our incurred losses in 2020, less than $6,000.
Just post that on Instagram, will you?
Nine, yeah, I'll put it on there. I'll have Amanda put it on Instagram. $900,000 to $6,000, okay? So again, I got to thank the board, I got to thank the department managers, I got to thank our employees. As a matter of fact, we had one year in the town highway department with no accidents. I bought a big, huge cake and it was the end of the day. We got the workers together and we all shared cake. I gave a little, you know, "Thank you for all you do" speech. They deserved that. And the cake was pretty good, I have to say. I got it over to Hannaford with the raspberry filling and everything. Price Chopper makes a good cake, too, and so does Lakery Bakery, but, all right, but I digress. So I think I made my point. What else? That's it?
Wow.
Yeah, I tried to keep it to a minimum.
Wow, I'm impressed.
So it's 9:23. Anything else for the good of the order? So thank you, town councilor Bob Haffner. Thank you, Deputy Attorney, Rose Mallon. Thank you, town board. Thank you, Joe Barlow from LookTV. Thank you, Peter Pape from Pape Productions. And thank you, audience, and Dave Dool for attending. Motion to adjourn? Dave, you want to make that motion? Or did you want to say something last minute?
Motion.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, moved by councilperson Prohne, seconded by councilperson McGee. All those in favor say aye. We're adjourned.